Good morning. I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is Wednesday, February 21st. And I would note for the record that all three commissioners are present right here in the Nat U Hill Room. And we will begin with our public statement. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people, regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear, and we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC. And with that, we will begin with our department updates. Ms. Kelly?
Good morning, Commissioners. Hospital emergency room visits for COVID-like illness have shown increases over the last week, as well as small increases in hospital admissions within Monroe County. The dominant variant is JN1, with common symptoms being sore throat, congestion, cough, and fatigue. Flu activity is noted as high, and our public health clinic is currently out of stock of COVID vaccines for those aged six months to four years, but we are expecting a shipment next week. We do have vaccines available for all other ages, and you can call 812-353-3244.
Thank you so much. Comments or questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Giffens?
Is there any rise in COVID sloughing that we're seeing in the wastewater? Do you know?
It actually trended slightly down. That's what...
It's a good sign.
Yes. All right. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your time. Any other departments have an update for us?
I have an update.
Oh. Mr. Cockrell.
And I guess... Yes, and I sent the Teams people a kind of present, PowerPoint presentation, if they could bring that up. And while they're doing that, I will... This really isn't related to the legal department, but it is related to the ARPA projects and the housing project we're working with. We've got members from Habitat here who have been very helpful and who we're partnering with on this project. If you could go to the first page, although it's probably the second page because the first page is just title, that would be great. What... Yes, I think that's it. Sorry, it's hard for me to see from here. What we have on the screen is kind of a general map of the area we're looking at. My creative blue lines are the property we're talking about. It's roughly 11 acres. If you go just north of this map, you'll find that Kroger South is there, so it's on Old 37. And then it's close to the Clear Creek Elementary School, and we're seeing a lot of other housing development in this area. So that's the property we're looking at. If you could go to the next slide. While they're doing that, the next slide is kind of a conceptual plan. It's not by any means final or anything like that, but it will show kind of the layout of what we're looking at. Particularly, what I'd want to show is, or, you know, when you look at this copy, it'll have an existing home on the site that we are looking at reutilization for a childcare center. It has two existing pole barn storage areas that Habitat will utilize for their construction projects, both on the site and elsewhere in the county. And then it also includes 32 units for Habitat to do their programs with, and then an additional 38 units for not-quite-Habitat-level housing, but not terribly expensive either. So kind of a step system, and as we know, to the west of this, they're having some kind of higher value, higher-priced properties as well. So we think that gives a good mix. We really liked, when we met with both the commissioners and council in the executive session, to kind of go over all the different options. I think what set this one apart was the ability to have potential childcare use. And so that, along with the fact that it's not extremely far from grocery, I am going to talk a little bit about this with the Redevelopment Commission tonight to see if there's any opportunity there to maybe do a residential TIF and maybe work in part of the plan of trying to figure out how to get a walkway from this area to that Kroger, because anybody who drives that knows that people are just walking along the side of the road, and it's not the greatest area. So that is it in a nutshell. If you have questions, I know you guys have been kind of involved in looking at these things as we move forward, but I thought it would be good to formally present where we're at. We've still got a lot of steps to go through. We have to go through our planning department. We have to figure out sewage and those kind of things. But I think we've got a good plan. I think our timeline will allow us to get everything under contract for the construction of the infrastructure by the end of the year, so we can utilize our ARPA funding.
Thank you so much, Mr. Cockrell. This is really exciting. I don't know if the folks at Habitat wish to offer some comment or insight. Thank you for being here. Ms. Goodwin.
Thank you for having us, and thank you for the opportunity to partner with you on this. We are excited. I'm excited about the variability of the housing stock that's going to be in this area. I live very nearby, and so it's nice to see that we'll be able to include some Habitat families in this part of town. I'm excited about the connection to the school and just the amenities that are available in the area, close connection to the Clear Creek Trail and things like that. So I think it's a great location. I think families will be excited about living there, and it's an opportunity certainly that we wouldn't have if it weren't, you know, for you allocating the ARPA funds for this project. The childcare aspect, too, I mean, our families would have to go far out of their way to find childcare if they're living on the south side of town. So that's a nice addition to the project, and glad that that was able to happen.
I would hope that some of the families might even be able to work at the childcare center. That way, they walk to work and...
Yeah, we actually have, I think, two people in the program who just joined that work at another childcare facility. So I think it's entirely likely that they would be interested in that opportunity.
Okay. Oh, yeah. Nice. Great. Thank you so much. Excellent. Did you have other comments or questions? Commissioner Giffens?
We know that there's a housing shortage, but there's also a shortage of childcare kind of openings and slots for kids. And so as we look to recruit young adults into our community, we have to be able to provide those kinds of things. And so I'm just so glad that we've been able to work with you on this.
Great. Commissioner Jones?
It's just really nice to be able to provide this in an area that has so many amenities of this sort and hasn't really received this kind of attention before now. So I'm glad to see us expanding in this direction.
I really appreciate this mix of housing, and hopefully, you know, we do have, you know, the plan is to produce for the private side of this more affordable-style housing, which I hope can happen. I think there are always a couple of things that happen with housing, and one is our wages in the county keeping up. And obviously, the state prohibits us from acting on that and ensuring that we have a basic living wage in this county. But also childcare. Childcare is an important factor for a lot of families. And so I'm just imagining this is going to be a laughter-filled, fun-filled neighborhood when it's done, and that's so exciting. So thank you so much. All right. And so the ARPA funding would be for infrastructure, correct?
Infrastructure and probably for the two non-housing facilities. We'll have to figure out how to renovate the current structures and making sure that the storage structures are somehow, how that's arranged with Habitat. Some of that's kind of planning questions on, you know, what happens to those two structures once Habitat no longer needs them? What can they be converted into? And so those are the kind of conversations we still need to work through.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Really appreciate everybody, all the hard work that's already gone into this. I know planning's already working on this, and thank you to Habitat for making some dreams come true in the future. It's really exciting. Thank you. Great. Are there any other department updates?
Can I share with people the very cute t-shirts that our Parks Department has designed for solar eclipse? This is actually, I didn't realize it at first, this is a bat hanging upside down. And you can get these shirts... Tell us, Kelly, where can people get these shirts? I just think they're just so adorable.
Importantly, the bat is wearing the prescribed glasses to ensure...
Well, I don't have the website memorized, but we are going to come to your meeting next Wednesday with our staff and to show everything. But that color, it's a beautiful blue, but it's actually called teal when you choose it on the website, and you have to choose your size first and then the color. It's not Amazon, kids. So... But it's great. It promotes our Monroe County Parks and Recreation Foundation, and it has a bat because during the solar eclipse, it's going to be dark, the bats may come out. So we'll see you for sure next week to talk more about it.
You have kid sizes, too.
Oh, we have children's sizes. We have every size you'd like. And different colors for different sizes is just how the vendor does it.
Great.
So thank you so much.
Excellent. Thank you. Nice. I like a little show and tell in our meeting.
Have a little fun today.
It's a good thing. Excellent. Any other department updates? These have been great so far. More good news on more good news. All right. So with that, our next item is proclamation. Commissioner Giffens?
This is a proclamation in observance of National Safe Place Week, whereas National Safe Place Week will be celebrated across the nation during the week of March 17th through 23rd, 2024, and the youth of Monroe County, Indiana, will determine the future strength of our country and be the bearers of our democracy. Youth need a safe haven from various negative influences such as child abuse, substance abuse, and crime, and they need to have resources readily available to assist them when faced with circumstances that compromise their safety. The Safe Place Program is committed to protecting the youth of Monroe County, Indiana, by offering access to short-term housing at neighborhood locations where trained volunteers are available to counsel and advise young people seeking assistance and guidance. In designated locations where youth can get information and immediate help, safe places found at businesses such as restaurants, convenience stores, movie theaters, and community buildings such as fire stations, libraries, and public transportation vehicles. The success of Safe Places is based on public-private collaborations between businesses, school systems, fire departments, law enforcement, and a network of volunteers. And more than 1,400 communities in 39 states administer the Safe Place Program at more than 22,000 locations. An increased awareness will encourage more communities to establish Safe Place locations where youth can readily access help that they need. Now, therefore, we, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim our observance of March 17th through the 23rd, 2024, as National Safe Place Week. Proclaim this... Proclaim this, what? Oh, 21st day of February. Thank you. 2024.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate the great work at Youth Service Bureau and all of the community partners that help ensure that we have plenty of safe places in our community. So excellent work. Thank you for reading that. Next, we have public comment. This section of our meeting is reserved for public comment on items not on our agenda. Each commenter has three minutes to speak. If you please give us your name and your county of residence as well. You may raise your hand on Teams or come up to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. Seeing none, we'll come back to our meeting, and item number six, please.
Move approval of minutes from February 7th, 2024.
We have a motion and we have a second. I know we had an edit that went in, and anything else? Comments, corrections? Okay. All right. With that, all those in favor of approving the minutes for February 7th, 2024 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 3-0. Next item, please.
Move approval of the claims docket accounts payable February 21st, 2024, and payroll February 23rd, 2023.
Second. We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Gregory?
Good morning. Good. Good morning. Okay. Got it. The accounts payable claims docket for February 21st, 2024 totals $12,415,858.19. This includes all emergency claims and adjustments. The payroll docket for February 23rd includes $1,471,003.98 in direct costs and the remaining $627,594.16 for indirect costs for a grand total of $2,098,598.14.
All right. Thank you so much. I'll just note for the record that Ms. Gregory is our new auditor. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much.
In your new role.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't, but I would like to congratulate our new auditor on her position.
Yes. Commissioner Giffens?
Thank you for saying congratulations, Ms. Gregory.
Great to have you here. And it's, yeah. Provide the actual data. Thank you. Appreciate it. Let's see if there's any public comments on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the claims docket accounts payable February 21st, 2024, and payroll February 23rd, 2024. Please indicate your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 3-0. Our agenda has the wrong year on it.
Yes, it does. Sorry, I didn't catch...
I missed that, too. So I will note for the record that we have received two reports. The first is from the Clerk of the Circuit Court, and that's for January 2024. And we've also received the Treasurer's Report for January 2024. And with that, we will move on to new business, please.
Yes. Move approval of Midwest Presort Agreement renewal, fund name reassessment, fund number 1224, in an amount of $42,234.46.
Second. We have a motion and we have a second. Our assessor, Sharp.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. This is basically, we do this every year and come before you, it's a service contract for stamps and mailing of my Form 11s that have to go out by the end of April. So we always get this to you early. It's been before the attorneys. Everything is approved. It went up a little bit because postage went up a little bit this year, but that's it. I still have the same amount of mailings to go out.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you so much. Comments or questions? Commissioner Giffens?
No. As you said, we see this every year, so...
Every year.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Okay. And so we did this as a, we didn't do this as a not-to-exceed, but you're pretty certain that it's going to come, it's going to be this is the number.
They've already, if you notice, they've already signed the contract, so we can get this all done.
Yeah. Okay. Excellent. So we're good. Excellent. Thank you so much. Let's see if there's, and thank you for being ahead of the curve, as always, on getting this to us long before you needed it.
Let's just hope it really works this year. I'm not, I'm not going to promise it'll be out on time, okay?
Well, it's certainly not for lack of planning and preparation on your part, so...
Oh, thank you.
So let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Midwest Presort Agreement renewal signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 3-0. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right. Next item, please.
Move approval of the 2024 Purdue University Extension Contract, Fund Name, County General, Fund Number 1,000, in an amount of $207,260.
Second. We have a motion and a second, and I believe we have Adi Ikwanwa on Teams. If she could be promoted from attendee to presenter? Ikwanwa. Yes, there she is. Adi. Excellent. There she is. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Adi Ikwanwa. I am the County Extension Director here at Monroe County, and I essentially am here to ask for the approval of our contractual agreement that Purdue Extension has with the county. And that part of the contractual agreement is that Purdue Extension will offer programming to our county in the areas of agriculture, natural resources, health, and human sciences for 4-H youth development, having two educators instead of one, and community development.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones? Just pleased to have you here.
Thank you for having me.
I hope that even more of our youth will take part in some of these programs. I think it's important for people to understand where their food comes from, how important it is to, for conservation, and all kinds of other things.
Yeah. And I recommend for residents who might not be familiar with what Extension does to check in on their website, because there are so many programs, as noted here, that are offered, everything from gardening to 4-H youth and everything in between. So really appreciate the hard work at the Extension Office. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We're here to serve the community.
Excellent. And let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room or raise your hand on Teams. Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the 2024 Purdue University Extension Contract signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 3-0. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Have a good day.
You, too.
Thank you.
All right.
Move approval of the Lamar Agreement for Safe Place Programs, Fund Name, Runaway and Homeless Grant, Fund Number 8120, in an amount of $4,050.
Second. We have a motion and we have a second. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. First off, I want to say thank you guys for doing our proclamation for National Safe Place Week that's coming up, and just kind of letting you know what we're doing at YSB. We're going to send thank you letters to all of our locations. I don't know if you, if everyone's aware, but we do serve four counties. We do Owen, Monroe, Green, and we took on Brown County, so we've got about 105 sites that we oversee. So we're going to send them all personal thank you letters. We're running a social media campaign this year to draw attention to what Safe Place is and what all the services we provide, as well as we're partnering with the city of Bloomington Parks and Rec during their spring break series, the week before, when MCCSC is on break and going to be doing some activities with them as well to get that out there. So thank you, guys, for that. Just wanted to acknowledge that. But what I'm bringing before you guys today is just, we're continuing our contract with the Lamar billboard. We do this every year. It's part of our RHY grant and helps us get some attention in our rural counties where there's not as many opportunities to do advertisement.
Great. Thank you so much. I've noticed some digital ads recently, too, so it's, that always helps just to hit every space you can.
Yes, we're working really hard on moving more towards the digital side.
Yeah. Excellent. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
Just thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
Well, again, thank you.
Yeah. We do appreciate all the hard work, and again, a big thank you to everyone who participates to make this program a success. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Lamar Agreement for Safe Place Program signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 3-0. Thank you again.
Thank you.
All right. Next item, please.
Move approval of Spectrum VoIP Phone Agreement for Purdue Extension Office, Fund Name, County General, Fund Number 1,000, in an amount of $10,346.40 for a 60-month contract.
Second. We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Crown?
Good morning, everyone. Greg Crown, Technical Services Department. We currently find ourselves with the Extension Office not having any phone service. The backend hardware has gone end-of-life and is right now not functioning and cannot be repaired. One thing we realized during this process is that my office did not have any communication with the vendor who was supporting that. It was directly with Purdue, so things got a little bit confused there, and now we find ourselves without phone service. So I did reach out to three companies. That would be Matrix, who was supporting the existing system, the ESI system. I also reached out to Comcast and then the Spectrum Group. The Spectrum Group had the lowest cost by providing the same level of service that all three were going to match. So this is a 60-month agreement. They provide the phones, the setup, they come and do all the installation, all the support for that. And they also, when they implement, they run on a trial period to see if we're okay with the setup before they ever do the first charge on that.
Okay. Excellent. Great. All right. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Commissioner Giffens?
Mr. Crown, it sounds like you were, once again, very thorough. Thank you.
Yeah. Really appreciate it. And, you know, voice-over IP phone service has improved greatly in the last decade or so. It makes a huge difference. It used to be pretty unreliable, but it really, it really is reliable service. So I appreciate you working on this and getting this resolved as soon as possible. Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Spectrum Voice-Over IP Phone Agreement for Purdue Extension Office signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 3-0. All right. Next item, please.
Move approval of Open Gov Software Agreement Renewal, Fund Name, Cumulative Capital, Fund Number 1138, in an amount of $321,650.98.
Second. We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Crown?
So our Open Gov web-based software program that provides our permitting and inspection software for the building department, the planning department, the septic portion of the health department, as well as some other offices we're trying to onboard, that original agreement's getting ready to expire. It was signed in June of 2020. This new agreement is mirror to the original agreement. There's no change in service or anything like that on it. The only notable change is we did add an auto-fill option last year that I paid a portion of that for my software budget to get us through December. So you'll see a prorated amount for $641.67 to get the contract leveled back up. So that charge for that service is added into the years two and three on this agreement. So this will take us up through April of '27, and then we'll have to sign again in May of that year.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
I really appreciate the fact that this goes across departments. I think it makes things easier for residents as they're applying for things, and also makes it easy to track what's going on.
Absolutely. Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. This has been a huge benefit to our community and individual residents and businesses who are trying to build in this county, to be able to go in and put this information in, to do the application for permits, and then they can see where the process is as well, which is, which is really important. So there's transparency everywhere. Really great, and I appreciate that we have this. So thank you. All right. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Open Gov Software Agreement Renewal signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 3-0. Thank you. Next item.
Move approval of Deckard Land Surveying Professional Services Agreement. Fund name, surveyors' corner perpetuation, fund number 1208, I'm sorry, 1202, in an amount not to exceed $25,000.
Second? We have a motion and a second, and we have Surveyor Enright Randolph here.
Hi, I'm happy to be here. I am going to share my screen real quick. This is from your question last time I was here, Ms. Githens. Commissioner Githens, let me see if I can do this quickly. And there's, I'll be here back-to-back. And basically, we have a copy-and-paste kind of approach to what we're spelling out in the summary, because the efforts here will be to hire a professional surveyor to help us with our perpetuation efforts. But instead of going all into that, I was going to show you an example of the deliverables that they provide us, and then a quick overview on this dashboard of our perpetuation efforts. And trust me, I won't take too much time at all. And so here is what you typically see as a perpetuation survey, and the deliverables come with monument records as well. But instead of going from one section corner and then, what we typically do is a private surveyor would come in and have a job for a client, and they would tie into this and then do their property survey. But that doesn't clearly give us an understanding of what that looks like when you push it a half mile down. And what we're doing here is, what I'm asking for is three contiguous sections. This is an older contract, and we had actually one, two, three, four, five contiguous sections, if you see there. So we're getting a really good sense of exactly how each one of these section corners line up to the next. And I'll just kind of scroll through it real quick. This is 88 pages. I won't go through it all. It's a very high-level view of what we're doing, and I just feel like this is worth it. So with that said, this is Indian Creek. I'll go to the dashboard and, oh, let me get rid of the Teams thing. I'll go over here where we kind of can filter it through contracts. As you can see, Indian Creek's over here, and we have those all perpetuated. So this is everything that we've been doing with contracts. Some of it is not just contracts that I have asked for. There has been a few contracts in the past that previous county surveyors have asked for. Also, one thing I think is very helpful as we're looking at this is, we have this many perpetuated monuments, 1,315. But out of those, only 530 of them actually have survey-grade information. I launched another program in-house to do orthoimagery review. So basically, we could find witnesses and try to place that centroid datum in the most correct spot as possible, and we have 101 of those. And what we're really trying to do is see this, and let me get away from the perpetuated one, this GIS one, these are kind of just placeholders for us to create this database. And as the information comes in and we get better, accurate data, then we can adjust those points. So from what we know that is out there, that's kind of just a placeholder. We have 522 of those corners. And a lot of these have very limited information. And I have no idea what previous surveyor, I'm picking on my Uncle Kevin Enright here. So, well, there's a couple. So then we also have Steve Farkas, Stephen Farkas, and Edmund Farkas, his dad. So in '91, this monument first had a record associated with it. This one's not dated, but this would probably be around 2000 that it was re-perpetuated. And then Mr. Enright came in in 2007 and perpetuated it. Mr. Enright established the surveyor review board, so that's why you start seeing these seals for the surveyor review board on it. And what I'm getting at is we have one survey that a licensed surveyor, Ben Bledsoe, had performed, but he was doing a job for a client. So that probably didn't go to the next mile over. And if that was unknown, then they have to push it another half a mile. And if that's not unknown, they have to push it another half a mile. And that cost gets pretty absorbent, and that's why we have a PS in-house. So while we are also doing these perpetuation agreements, we are also focusing on the Bean Blossom area. And let me go ahead and just filter this back out. And as, right now, we're up here, in kind of the gospel area, White River. Eventually, we'll have a good data to define our county boundaries, very clear. And then we're going to continue on the north end with our in-house PS. But as I have funds available, I'm going to continue to ask for these service agreements to kind of button up all the west end, as you saw that's kind of getting complete. And both of these agreements you'll see are on the west end. And then eventually get to the east side and then the north side. There was a Senate Bill 382 where the legislators were looking at GIS kind of extensively. And I prioritize my efforts to perpetuate the county boundaries so we can have any uncertainty contained within our county boundaries. I feel like that's the first step to preserve and protect the property rights of all Monroe County citizens. And then after that, my approach will be to perpetuate the townships, and then we'll contain all that uncertainty within each township. And if you start thinking of taxing bases and stuff, they use townships. So this will be great data that we can provide to the state, but also to the auditor's office to integrate with our parcel data. We're just moving incrementally. We just got the foundation with our parcel fabric to even consider putting this type of data in there to help the representation of that data. That's it in a nutshell. So that's probably the quickest I've ever went over all this, but I've been here for almost 19 years, and I think I've got it down. So I'll stop my share. I think that stops it. Yep. And so, yeah, I'm asking for the approval for Deckard Land Surveying to perpetuate three contiguous sections and Richland Township, Section 1930 and 31. And I'm here for any additional questions.
Thank you so much. That was really useful for the public's edification. And why do you need corners? We need corners. All right. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, thank you in particular for working on the county boundaries. That's something that it will certainly be useful to have well-defined. I realize there's still a whole lot more to be considered after that, but that does seem like a good place to...
As this technology, GIS, continues to be utilized, it's very important for us to establish those boundaries.
Commissioner Githens?
As you're presenting this and talking about the sections, I'm trying to dig out of my brain from fourth grade, you know, what those sections meant with regard to the schools that had to be provided as well. So it's truly part of Indiana history that goes along with this.
Yeah, there's a fun fact, and I wasn't aware of it, actually. Dr. John Batton, in our survey technician, sorry, GIS coordinator, Dr. John Batton, and Jason George, our survey technician, as we were preparing for a presentation, we realized, I think, every 14th section was supposed to be dedicated for a school area. And that was just kind of something I never knew, because it didn't really tie into the monuments that I'm focused on. But I just thought it was a fun fact.
Part of the old Northwest Territories legislation, and that's why we have all these squares and grids. And you see it in Michigan and Ohio and Indiana.
I think it's one in every 16, but very...
Is it 16? I could be wrong.
You know, it's been a long time since I was in fourth grade.
You remember a lot.
It's good.
Your teacher would be so proud.
But fun. It's just fun.
It is.
All right. Thank you so much. And again, the public gets a glimpse at what the surveyor does. And let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand in Teams, or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. And I know that you've made yourself available to members of the public who have questions about this as well, so I encourage them to contact your office if they have questions.
Yes, absolutely.
That's great. Thank you. All right, seeing no commenters, all those in favor of approving the Deckard Land Surveying Professional Services Agreement, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries three, zero. Next item.
Move approval of Ozer Surveying and Mapping LLC Service Agreement. Fund name, surveyors' corner perpetuation, fund number 1202, in an amount not to exceed $26,000.
Second? We have a motion and we have a second. Surveyor Enright Randolph?
Yes, and this is basically a repeat of the agreement. As you can see, the not-to-exceeds are very close. When they get out in the field, they're not certain what they're going to encounter, so they do their best job of giving us a not-to-exceed. But we move to an hourly rate, because it's easier to kind of do that versus like per corner, which we did for our very first round. And I like to use the analogy, that was us going through a train tunnel without a flashlight. So now we're providing them with a flashlight at hourly rate. And, you know, both of the last contracts came in under the not-to-exceed, and I expect that for both of these as well. So again, this is for Ozer Mapping, another surveying firm. I've actually reached out to two other surveying firms, but they weren't able to provide the service. And there was actually one that came in kind of high, so I said, "No, thank you." And so I try to be very fair, so it's not going to just ever be one surveyor. And this is for Van Baron Township, Section 1930 and 31.
Great. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
No.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
All right. Thank you again for all this information. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams, or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. All right, seeing none. All those in favor of approving the service agreement with Ozer Surveying and Mapping LLC, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries three, zero. Thank you again.
Thank you so much.
All right, next item, please.
Move approval of Bledsoe, Riggar, Cooper, and James Service Agreement, second. Addendum, fund name, 2017 GO bond, fund number 4810, in an amount not to exceed $36,460.
Second? We have a motion and we have a second, and we have Ms. Whitmer joining us.
Hello.
Hello. Good day again. This one's really simple. Also, we're asking for this, a second addendum, is to extend the expiration date to 12/31/25. Nothing else changes.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Githens?
When I was going through our packet, it was confusing to me, because it kept having old...
Well, county legal said put all of them in.
Yeah, I just, I had to go back and forth and back and forth when I was looking through this.
Trust me, if it was me, it'd be in the two pages.
Yeah, got it. Thank you. Let's see if there's, and thank you for putting this together. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand in Teams, or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. All right, seeing none. All those in favor of the Bledsoe, Riggar, Cooper, James Service Agreement, second addendum, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries three, zero. Next item, please.
Move approval of the Hoosier Hills Food Bank MOU for Will Detmer Park Garden.
Second? We have a motion and a second, and we have our Parks and Recreation Director, Ms. Whitmer, here still.
This is absolutely a wonderful partnership with Hoosier Hills Food Bank. We've had a partnership since 2010. We have Will Detmer Park Gardens. They garden a portion of it. They pay for their own water for that portion. And we also help them out with a shed, and a tractor, and training. And we also do educational programs with them. So it's a win-win for everyone, and it gives us extra eyes in the park.
Yeah, nice. Excellent. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
One of the times that I was out at Hoosier Hills Food Bank last summer in their drive-through, I met one of the interns that was actually doing the farming. And he said he'd never done anything like this before in his life, but he was just thriving. He just was so excited about it.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions about this. Somewhat technical, maybe.
Who, and Giulio is not here.
Not that technical.
Oh, okay.
Not that technical. First of all, I kind of wondered about the week notice for using the tractor, because tractors can't just be used on any whim in farming. The conditions have to be right for using a tractor. So if you give a week's notice and it pours the day before, they aren't going to be able to use the tractor that next day.
This really isn't a sticking point. The tractor's there. We have a hub manager who actually works Monday through Friday and helps Hoosier Hills Food Bank. We just wanted to make sure that it properly has the oil and fuel if they're planning on using it. We will be very agreeable to their needs. We just want to make sure the tractor's ready to go.
I've just been in situations before where that's become a little problematic.
So no worries with the tractor.
The other thing I wanted to ask about, I really appreciate the focus on organic. And the way you described it is very much the way it should be described. There's frequently a lot of misunderstanding about what organic means. Lots of people think all it means is not using anything that might affect human beings. It actually goes way, way beyond that. And I really appreciate all the information you included. It mostly looked really good to me, although some of the preferred pesticides were very broad spectrum. And I would, like diatomaceous earth, I would kind of recommend moving those to the not-preferred ones. And then I just wanted to ask if, because I don't believe organic certification is being included in this, am I right about that?
Probably not. We can talk to our naturalists about that, and it might be great if we could just meet with you and go over things, because you're very knowledgeable in that area, and work with our naturalist. And we, it's our, also, we have other gardeners there, and we have to educate them. And some are novice, so we're doing our best to get them up here.
Yeah, and that's wonderful.
No, I totally agree. Anything that we can do and approve, and if you could help us, that would be wonderful.
I'd be delighted to.
Awesome.
I was just kind of wondering if the food will be distributed as being organic. I'm not quite sure about the legalities of that.
I don't know what Hoosier Hills Food Bank does once they get the food, if they... I've not heard of such a thing, that they're certifying it organic.
I know they do distribute certified organic food. I know they do do that. And there may be no problem at all.
Okay.
If you're a commercial grower, if you sell more than a certain amount, then you must be certified. But since this isn't commercial growing, I really don't know how it would apply to you.
I don't either. I will, I can work with county legal and Giulio and just see what they've been doing.
I don't think they've been stating that it's organic when they've distributed it. The times that we've been down there to help distribute food on hot Fridays in the summer, they've, the distributions haven't specifically noted organic or not, and I'm not sure, you know, if that answers your question. But I think it's worth looking into.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think that if it can legally be identified that way, there are a lot of people who would appreciate that. But it's just a little item to look into.
I really appreciate the synergy going on right here at this moment, because this is great collaboration, and thank you for your willingness to share your expertise. I think it's also great, because anything that's done at the food bank plot is clearly going to impact what happens for those gardeners around it who are renting the other spots. And they're going to be learning. They're going to be learning a lot. So I think it's a great idea, so I appreciate that.
And what's one more thing is that Hoosier Hills Food Bank Warehouse is just down the road from Will Detmer Park. So it's very handy for the volunteers and for their employees to get there.
Really good. Yeah, excellent. Thank you so much. All right, and again, thank you, Commissioner Jones. That's excellent. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams, or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of approving the Hoosier Hills Food Bank MOU for Will Detmer Park Garden, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Move approval of Ordinance 2024-12 Recreation Endowment Advisory Committee Bylaws Revisions.
Second? We have a motion and we have a second. I don't know, Ms. Whitmer, if you're going to address this, or legal, or how you want to approach this.
Well, I don't, I think it's me.
I'm sure you will do well because it's actually very clear in here. It's very clearly explained, so. No tough questions?
Okay, no tough questions. What it is, is that when we started to revise the bylaws, we contacted County Legal, we did contact Penny Githens, and we contacted the Community Foundation so we could have a very good working bylaws of what we actually do and actually to improve the system and to improve the, how do I say this? The categories of the members so they're more broad, so we have more broad appeal to other people in the community. So that's why, and I think the last time we did that, what, 10 years ago or eight years ago? Yeah. So I think the things that we did was to make sure that, the committee is only advisory. They talk about accessible recreation and what to do with the Kellogg grant money. They give it to the Community Foundation Board. They either approve it or don't approve it. They've approved every project we've put forth 100% of the time because, you know, we're very careful. We try to get the funds toward the Sophia Travis playscape and the playground and the splash pad because the grant people from Michigan told me personally, this money is to be used for, you know, accessible recreation. And everything that we've bought for you should look new and clean and maintained at a high level. And that is why the endowment was started per the grant requirements. So it's, it's, and that's what we've done. I mean, if the Michigan people would come down, they'd be quite pleased, I think.
They would. Excellent. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Githens?
I want to thank Kelly for including me in, as we worked through these, these revisions. Every time I've been out at Cars Farm Park and seen the playscape out there, it looks so inviting, just absolutely inviting. And so I'm very proud of what you've been doing.
Well, it, it's been a community endeavor, and we appreciate all the help.
I remember when this first got started, I was on the council. All right. No, it's really important to, yeah, to keep this up. And I appreciate your service, Commissioner Githens, on this board as well, so thank you for that. All right, I appreciate it. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand in teams or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. Seeing none. All those in favor of approving Ordinance 2024-12, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three, zero. I'm going to make sure, you know, you pull these pages apart and then you lose your space. Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. All right. Next item, please.
Move approval of Community Corrections 2023 Annual Report.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Good morning.
Morning. I'm Becca Stride, Community Corrections Director and Deputy Chief Probation Officer. As is our yearly duty with our Department of Correction grants, I'm here before you just to give you a snapshot of our grants from 2023. However, before I jump into 2023, which is our, which was our 39th year, I wanted to let you know that for this year of 2024, we are in our 40th year of being a community corrections program. And so we were honored last fall by the Indiana Association of Community Corrections Act Counties, which is essentially Community Corrections Professional Association with a 40-year notice and anniversary plaque. So it's one of the older, older, I'm as old as the program, so. But going back to 2023, so just as a reminder, the Department of Correction provides us with grant funds to fund our community corrections program, which includes our home detention electronic monitoring, two of our problem-solving courts, that would be mental health court and drug court, and then also our pretrial services. All of our grant funds specifically fund salaries and fringe benefits for our case managers and probation officers, as well as our field officers. So in 2023, we received just over $1.5 million in grant funds. That was similar to 2022, and it's likely going to be the same for 2025. I'm actually in the process of writing the 2025 grants now. The state of Indiana and the Department of Correction has flatlined all counties the past few years, and we're anticipating that 2025 is going to be the same. So we have had to rely on project income to help supplement some salary raises, fringe benefits increases, that type of thing. A few highlights from 2023. The drug court saw 500, their 528th graduate from their program, and mental health court had their 24th graduate from their program. All of our problem-solving courts are overseen by Judge Decoff and the problem-solving court team. So to have 528 grads is, since 1999, is a huge accomplishment. The pretrial program completed nearly 1,500 assessments on people who were booked into jail. And those assessments were completed to help provide the court with information regarding their release and any conditions placed on them during their pretrial period. Since pretrial began in October of 2016, we have assessed over 10,000 individuals. One of the things that marked 2023 was we had several staff vacancies. We're still, actually have a few vacancies left over from 2023, specifically our field officer position. Our field officer positions, they go out into the field. There are eyes and ears for all of our clients or for our home detention unit on our clients, going into their homes, checking on them. They'll follow them up, make sure that they're able to go to treatment. Are they following their home detention schedule? It's a hard job. Our field officers are working evenings, weekends, and they're also on call 24/7. So that has been a difficult position to keep filled. And then we also had a few probation officer positions that remained vacant, but the probation department, being as great as they are, really pitched in to help each other out with caseloads. So no clients went without a great probation officer or field officer to help them. And then I'm sure you, or as you have heard many times before from presenters from our department, of course, the reducing revocations challenge continued in 2023. And while that challenge is not specific to our community corrections programs, our case managers, our probation officers, and those programs absolutely benefited from those, from the reducing revocations challenge. And the biggest way that the, the community corrections specifically benefited from the reducing revocations project was through our enhancement of evidence-based practices training for all of our probation officers. All of our probation officers last year sat through a 32-hour training in one week to get instruction and coaching support on applying evidence-based practices in their appointments with their clients. We also are working on projects to incentivize clients since we know through evidence-based research that a protective factor for clients doing well is to reinforce what they're doing well and provide them with incentives. And then, again, not specific to community corrections, but we also changed our probation conditions. So instead of conditions staying, you shall do this, you shall do that, it is now written as I agree to or I will participate in treatments that the clients are, are taking ownership and, and hopefully some enthusiasm in the conditions that they're, the courts being, they're being asked to, to participate in. Again, all with the idea that this will lessen violations that we're filing. So that was all going to continue in 2024. Our community corrections advisory board continues to meet quarterly to discuss ongoing projects regarding the grants and our, and our programs. So we have lots of stakeholders at the table helping direct us. So thank you.
Thank you so much for all of the information. We appreciate it. Um, let's see if there are any comments or questions, Commissioner Githens?
I like the rewording of the things that you're doing with the clients. It sounds much more like a contract rather than an edict from on high. And so I really appreciate that. Do the field officers that you're talking about, how often do they have to help with transportation for people?
They don't transport, but they are troubleshooting. They'll help clients troubleshoot. So if they're, the client's at home and the field officer notices, hey, on your schedule, you were supposed to leave for treatment at 3 o'clock, but I, according to your GPS, you're still at home. What's going on? What can I help you with? So we have things like, we can provide bus tickets, that kind of thing. But our field officers don't transport clients.
But they do the troubleshooting. That's what I was more interested in. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I'm always pleased to hear the emphasis on the evidence-based practices that seems so obvious and yet isn't always understood.
Very important. Good point. Yeah, I appreciate all the work that everyone in your department does. It's so important and it makes a huge difference. I'm just kind of surprised that there's not any kind of accommodation from Department of Corrections for salary increases, cost of living, anything. It's, it's unfortunate, so, but I'm, I'm glad you found a way around it. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. Seeing none. All those in favor of accepting the Community Corrections 2023 Annual Report, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three, zero. Thank you.
And congratulations to all those graduates.
Yes.
These are people back in our community.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Back with their families, back at home. Excellent.
Yeah.
Good point. Yeah. All right, next item, please.
Move approval of JAG grant for High Tech Crime Unit. Fund name, JAG Grant HTCU. I don't have a, oh, I don't have a fund number. Perhaps Ms. Hamlin can supply that. And the amount of $24,935. This was added later, I guess.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second, and I'll note that this is a grant. $24,935. It could be that this is a fund name to be determined. Oh, there she is, Ms. Hamlin. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I do have a fund number. I'll need to run through my email real quick and provide it to you. This is a request for your signature. Would you like me to do that before I go any further?
I'm sorry, the fund number is 8186. It was not on our agenda, but it is on the, your agenda request.
Great. All right, this is a request for the Commissioner's signature on newly received Justice Assistant Grant funding that was awarded to the prosecutor's office's High Tech Crime Unit. The funding is in the amount of $24,935 and will be used to purchase additional hardware and software for this project. The additional hardware and software will allow for the High Tech Crime Unit to employ an additional investigator, which will alleviate the backlog of investigative requests that the HTCU has received. The grant requires no match for the first and second year of funding if we choose to apply again. There are currently 58 cases in the HTCU queue, so hiring this third investigator will help alleviate that backlog and get these cases processed more quickly.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, actually, this is a very worthwhile program, so I've been very supportive of it.
Commissioner Githens?
We've seen even some of the county employees be impacted by folks trying to do inappropriate things online, like, say, change my, my direct deposit for my payroll. It happened to me. So thank goodness that our, our staff caught it, but this is exactly why we need these things in place.
Yeah, absolutely. It's, it's amazing that there are 58 cases in the queue. That's, that's an impressive number.
If I can clarify, our High Tech Crime Unit is not specifically for crimes on the internet. It's to process evidence in all kinds of crimes. So I just didn't want the public to think that we've had hundreds of online cases referred to our office. It's to process, you know, cell phones and other digital evidence.
Right. Right. Excellent. Thank you for the clarification. Okay, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand in teams or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. All right, seeing none, and I'll say it again, the fund number is 8186. All those in favor of approving the JAG grant for High Tech Crime Unit, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three, zero. Next item.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move approval of Ordinance 2024-11 Capital Improvement Board, CIB, interlocal.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Cockrell?
Yes, as you are aware, the county commissioners created the capital improvement board for the Convention Center project. Since that was approved, we have had numerous conversations with the city. And I, I think last spring, it all kind of got re-kicked off by Commissioner Githens working with Councilwoman Scimbalarie and Councilwoman Wilt to kind of go through and try to get a draft interlocal. It's taken a while, clearly. And this, this interlocal, we've discussed with both the city administration, legal person, Margie Rice, who expressed her regrets of not being able to be here today, but she had another meeting. Stephen Lucas, who represents the city council, and Molly Turner King, who represents the county council. The county council actually already approved this last week. And so, long story short, I guess the best way for me to describe it is the way that the, the budgets and things will work, will look almost exactly like how we do with dispatch, where both the city and the county would look at the budget and, and have to approve it. A lot of the more controversial areas were actually removed in the last few months, dealing with CDC appointments and things like that. And I think the CIB would really like to get this settled so that they, one less thing that they have to worry about. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them. It's just there's, we've talked about this a lot internally, so I don't want to, and I think, I think that we've talked a lot about it externally, so I don't think there's anything in here that really would shock the conscience of anyone. But I'm more than happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you so much, Mr. Cockrell. Commissioner Githens, comments, questions?
I do have a question and then a comment. Do we know if this is on the agenda soon for the city council?
I have been invited to their meeting on the 28th, where they are going to, to review this. So I haven't checked my calendar to see if, if I'm available that night, but I'm pretty sure I probably am.
This is, well.
Hope it's early on the agenda.
Yeah. This is, this is just excellent, excellent news. We have been working on this for years. This all started even before I was sworn in as a commissioner. So I appreciate the hard work of everybody in moving this forward, and this will move it forward for our community.
Absolutely. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
I also just appreciate everyone who's worked on this. There were times when it seemed like it might be impossible to get here. And it's pretty exciting to have finally managed it, and hopefully things will start moving forward quickly.
I think this is reflective of sort of turning the page and really progress being made. Our communications with the new administration, new city council members, everything is going very well. And I think the community should take heart to see this. I do have a question for you, Mr. Cockrell. Can the CIB, Capital Improvement Board, also be the Building Corporation?
Well, I think that the board itself cannot. The membership could be consistent.
There you go.
If that was the choice, again, that, that Building Corporation is kind of a product of the city council, and so they, they have the have the choice, but we did confirm with bond council that that would not be prohibited.
Excellent. Thank you so much. That's, that would be a great thing, I think. It would make the most sense, but I really appreciate that. Thank you. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand in teams or you may come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. We have Mr. MG here from the Chamber of Commerce. It's still morning. Good morning.
And good mor— excuse me. And good morning, Commissioners. This is Chris MG from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce and a resident of Monroe County. You know, as you know, the Chamber's been working on this expansion of the Convention Center for years. We really would like to, we were encouraged to see the development of the Capital Improvement Board by this body last year, and appreciate the work by the Commissioners, especially Commissioner Githens, in putting this local, interlocal agreement together. I think it's an improvement over the one I saw last December. It's shorter, less complicated, and I can get through it easier. So I want to just strongly say that the work is proven in the final document, and we do appreciate that. And what this Convention Center is, and we've been through this a bunch of times, is economic development and quality of place here, especially for those sort of eateries and other service industries during those Sunday through Thursday period. I made a longer comment last week at the County Council meeting that you can go through, but I just want to appreciate the work on this, and hopefully we can move forward with the CIB taking over those decision makings and I'm not before you here talking about the expansion of the Convention Center again. But thank you again.
Thank you so much. And it's a, I'm glad you said that. It's a good reminder that this is also a civic center. There's a role of, for the community here to benefit from this as well, so it's excellent. All right, any other comment? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving ordinance 2024-11, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries 3-0.
I wanted to say hooray instead of aye.
I know. Aye. Yay. All right, thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move approval of ordinance 2024-10 to amend ordinance 86-11 for no parking.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Ridge has been waiting patiently to tell us about this.
Good morning. So this item went before our Traffic Commission Board on January 18th. We received the request from adjacent property owner on October 8th. The reason why it didn't come to the Board until January is we canceled the November meeting, and then we also wanted to take the time to do our due diligence to let the property owners know how they would be affected. We sent letters to all the adjoining property owners, invited them to our meeting in January. We only had one person show up at that meeting. So there seems to be, the Board discussed this in length, and there's a narrowness on this section of roadway in this subdivision, and it does create a hazard for when we're trying to plow roads also. All the homes are provided with the driveways to be able to park in their driveways. The Board passed this unanimously on January 18th to bring it forward. We also, after the Board passed this, we notified again all the property owners that would be affected by letters stating that it was a public meeting and that they could come and support or not support the action. And we have not received really any feedback, so it's just one section of roadway in this subdivision.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Githens?
Is it the whole length of, you said it's not the whole length of Dunley Drive, so is it?
Is Dunley Drive?
The whole length of that?
The whole length of that.
Okay, thank you. It's a shorter street, but I agree regarding, because I went, I was looking at another plan commission site, and I thought, well, I'll just go over there and take a look. And that turn is very tight there, and I, because I was thinking, why am I worried about parking here? But that turn is tight, and I can imagine if it was full of vehicles, it would be difficult, and especially in the winter, but anytime. It's just a blind, it becomes a blind corner, so thanks to the Traffic Commission for looking into this. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of ordinance 2024-10, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. Next item.
Move approval of DLZ Agreement for Construction Inspection Services for Fullerton Pike Phase III. Fund name, Fullerton Pike Phase III. Fund number, 8169, in an amount of $1,479,700.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Ridge?
So when the project was originated in 2017, every project is provided a DES project number through NDOT. If the project becomes a road and a bridge, then there are two DES numbers assigned to the project. When we did this contract in December 14, 2022, the contract was combined into just one for construction inspection services for the construction, during the construction of the project. However, NDOT has agreed to allocate 80% funding to the construction inspection services, so they need the contract split, so we can divide it between the two DES numbers. So we're not changing the amount. We're only creating, we're only separating the $1,479,700 between the two projects, so it can receive the 80% funding.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
Just a reminder to people how long this takes, but also it, how critical of the inspection part of this is.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
All right. And I appreciate you working on this really important item, and it's a big step forward, so thank you. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. Seeing none, all those in favor of the DLZ Agreement for Construction Inspection Services for Fullerton Pike Phase III, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries 3-0. Next item.
Move approval of the ratification of the Lockmueller Contract Amendment for Surveying Moore's Creek Road and Stip Road. Fund name, Stormwater. Fund number, 1197, in an amount of $12,200.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second, and we have our MS4 operator, Ms. Thetonia here, joining us. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kelsey Thetonia, MS4 Coordinator, the Highway Department. I wanted to give you a quick update on the Stip Road and Moore's Creek Road project. So this addendum is for some surveying work to delineate the construction limits of the project prior to tree removal. We will be removing all of the trees within the construction limits on the Moore's Creek Road section of the project. That is the first section that will be constructed. Stip Road, we will be removing trees on the north side of the road to help with utility relocations, but that portion of the project will not be beginning yet until Moore's Creek Road is finished. We have an email set up through Lockmueller Group, our project management, to provide monthly updates on the project and to help field questions from the public. So we will be distributing that email address to our stakeholders very soon. We will also be hanging door tags on the affected property owners and neighbors Friday afternoon this week. So we are beginning our education outreach campaign in full this week, and we are prepared to start fielding questions on this project.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you so much. Commissioner Jones, comments, questions?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Githens?
Well, I know from talking with you privately, and so now I get to say this publicly, that while we never want to be taking down trees, a lot of the trees that will be taken out at this point are not valuable trees in essence. Could you talk to the public a little bit about that?
Sure. There will be quite a few trees removed. Majority of them are very small in diameter, and the species are not great quality, where they're softwoods, they're kind of the pioneer species that have grown in over the years. There are a handful of larger trees that will be removed, but they are few. So we are planning on replanting trees in the area in our Eastman at the completion of the project, and I'm going to be working with some folks to determine the best species in the area to try and provide better habitat and species diversity in the area, so.
That's great. No, and I appreciate that point, that we are going to be, in a sense, replacing trees, but doing it with better quality trees and those which are going to give us a diversity in species, which is important, so for their longevity, for the habitat and everything else. So I really, I really do appreciate that. Thank you. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. I would also ask, when you, once you have that email set up, if you could make sure it gets on our homepage, so folks can see it right when they land, that would be great. Thank you. That's a, that's a great idea, just that two-way communication. It's really, really smart.
May I say something else? You know, I, too often we forget to acknowledge the training and professionalism of our staff, and I want to compliment Ms. Thetonia on everything she does. She's just, she's just such a great addition to the county.
Yeah, yeah, and we saw that in action at the State House this week.
We did. We should talk about that in a few minutes.
It was impressive. Yes, it was impressive. Thank you.
Thank you all for your support.
Yeah. All right. We don't have any other public comments, so all those in favor of ratifying the Lockmueller Contract Amendment for Surveying Moore's Creek Road and Stip Road, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
All right. We don't have any appointments today. We do have some announcements, and I'll let Commissioner Githens talk about our trip to the State House.
Yes, for the second time, a group of us went up to the State House to oppose enactment of House Bill 1108. This is a bill that would override our current county ordinance on slope restrictions for building. Currently, Monroe County has a slope restriction of 20, of 15%, which means a rise of no more than 15 feet across a 100-foot expanse. And part of that was put into place based upon what we saw as recommendations from Indiana Department of Environmental Management and from stormwater manuals and just a variety of different things. And it's also based on the fact that we have some very fragile soil here. And so one of the state representatives that's supposed to be representing the interests of Monroe County residents introduced this bill, and it was also supported in the Senate by a state senator that represents part of Monroe County. And the bill is, would increase slope restrictions to 25%, which is just really hard for me to justify, or I think hard for anyone to justify. But I want to compliment Ms. Thetonia from the Stormwater Department, Jackie Nestor-Jellen from our Planning Department. In the previous trip up, Margaret Clements, who's on our Planning Board, went up. You were up there, Martha Miller of our Soil and Water Conservation District, all went up, and we actually had others in the audience who were there in the support of the bill. I was very disappointed that the committee passed it out, favored passage of the bill. We're waiting to see what happens when it comes to the floor of the Senate at this point.
It is rather unfortunate because it is, it was a Monroe County targeted bill. Both sides of the, of the bill were all Monroe County folks, so it was kind of strange. It's like, why didn't we just have this meeting down in Monroe County? It's, it's not designed to provide more housing. Housing is more expensive when you build on slope because you have to do more engineering. It is really, I think one senator said it well, it's a wealthy person's bill, and, and that is very true. So sad to see that happen, and we will continue to fight to protect Monroe County residents and the environment that we have to ensure that people do want to live here. Because if you have terrible water quality, if you have terrible stormwater issues, no one's going to want to be here anyway. So everyone's housing value will decline appreciably. And we do need to ensure that we maintain the quality of life that we're used to here, which is why our land is more expensive than neighboring counties' land. People want to be here. That's a testament to good stewardship of our environment and our infrastructure. And as the Legislative Services Office is warned with this bill in Indiana, that this is going to cost communities money. So we're going to be providing corporate welfare for builders in our community, which, I don't know. Anyway, disappointing, but I'm glad we fought. I'm glad we fought.
Well, the other part is, is that part of the reason we were fighting, too, is to protect current homeowners and businesses, because they can be greatly impacted by this. And what, what was astounding to me is that two weeks ago, State Senator Eric Cook was here supporting, as, as the lawyer for the Windsor Private Homeowners Association, and arguing against a rezone to protect the property rights of those homeowners. And he was the Senate sponsor for this bill in the Senate, which I think is the reverse of protecting current homeowners and businesses. And so I just, it just doesn't sit well with me, what has, what has happened.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely agree. What is it, 30% of legislators in the state of Indiana are builders?
Well, they're, the people on the committee, one was a surveyor, one was builder, it just, yeah. But again, Ms. Thetonia and Ms. Nestor-Jellen and Martha Miller, fabulous, fabulous.
Yeah, really good work.
To represent residents.
Really proud to be there with all of you. That was good.
And it, you can view the whole testimony online.
All right. The other thing I would like to mention is that we have, the Indiana Broadband Office is working through the how to distribute federal funds to ensure that everyone across the state, but specifically for us in Monroe County, has access to Internet, and that fixed service is sufficient in terms of speed. And we are going to pick up the mantle here, and we're going to work on becoming the challenger. A local government can be a challenger to FCC mapping. There's a lot to learn and a lot to teach the community, but all of this happens pretty much the month of March, where we are missing part of our community for a week. So it is going to be all hands on deck and hectic, but I'm really excited that we can play an important role here in conveying the current situation to the state so that they can then auction off those services that need to be provided to somebody, and within a few years, it won't happen overnight, but within a few years, everyone in this county will have access to sufficient Internet, just like we had to make sure people had electricity and telephone service back in the day. So it is difficult because we're going to have to prove the negative, that the FCC believes you have service, but you do not have sufficient service or no service at all. And Internet service providers have their own challenge section that they have to deal with also to prove the negative. So it is a difficult process, but we are very excited. John Baton, our GIS Coordinator, has agreed to take this on and be, you know, the data coordinator to help residents get this information back to the state. So thank you, Mr. Baton, Dr. Baton. Thank you so much. This is going to be a huge help for all of us in Monroe County, and we're really excited about it, and you'll be hearing more about it soon. We just don't have very many details at this moment, so just be prepared. I did want to note as well that we are always accepting applications for boards and commissions. Go to co.munro.in.us for more information to fill out an application. We also host six hours of office hours every month, and all you have to do is go to the calendar at our homepage and click through the dates and look for the times of those meetings. I believe I have Thursday night this week, so I think that's coming up. We do have some additional blood drive dates that, our, our blood drive is, is held at Ivy Tech Shreve Hall the next The next dates coming up are Wednesday, March 6th, from 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., and Friday, March 15th, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Go to redcross.org to reserve your spot. There is a critical need for blood product across the country and locally. Please consider signing up for the Resident Alert Notification System, especially with spring weather coming on and the possibility of severe weather. This is your best way to stay safe. And again, that's at the megaphone in the center of our homepage, co.munro.in.us. We are also encouraging residents to continue to submit requests for the Rural Repair Program that we're utilizing American Rescue Plan Act dollars to ensure, we have $400,000 set aside to ensure that residents are able to remain in their homes and that their homes are habitable. This is really geared for low and moderate income residents. If you have an urgent repair need for your home, this has to be owner occupied, please contact your township trustee. And if you are a resident, and this is for residents outside the city of Bloomington, but if you are a resident outside the city of Bloomington and Perry Township, we just ask that you contact the commissioner's office directly for assistance. The program's going well, and I thank Ms. Purdy for organizing. The detail side, really appreciate that. Anything else that we need to talk about?
I want to remind everybody that next Monday evening here in the Nat U Hill Room at 6 o'clock, we will have a community program to discuss the Integrated Reentry and Correctional Supports Program. The program will be led by Jamie Whitaker of Mental Health America, Indiana. This is a program that we want to bring to our community that will work with individuals who are incarcerated, who have mental health and/or substance use disorder, and then they will work with those individuals as they re-enter the community to make that reentry more successful. So, yeah, public is invited, and it will be available also virtually.
Yeah. This is one of the things you've been working on, one of the many things, and thank you for all that work. And this is something we can do now, before we build the new facility, but it, but it's a testament to why we need more space in the new facility. We need to keep moving forward as quickly as possible. We need to move forward effectively and efficiently, not hastily, but quickly. And, and this is one of the ways that we can utilize very limited space, but, but to help reduce recidivism in Monroe County. So hopefully folks can join, and it's going to be a virtual meeting as well, so if you can't get here, please join via Teams or watch the recording later, and you could see the kind of work that's, that's being done now to try to address our criminal justice needs.
And we will need community partners to make this a go, to really put this program into place. But I also want to acknowledge that one of the partners we're working with is New Leaf New Life, and this was a, a community program that Commissioner Jones's mother was critical in helping to get going.
Yes. Yeah, and I continue to be very proud of what's come of it.
Yeah.
I wish she could know where it's going.
Yeah. Yeah, she would be so proud. She'd be so proud. Excellent. All right. We do not have any items for our work session, therefore, we will not have one. And yay! It's been a long meeting. All right. So, but I will say that our next meeting is February 28th and 10:00 a.m., right here in the Nat U Hill Room and on Teams, and thank you all for your patience and attention. We had a lot to get through, and I think we, we did well. Thanks, everyone. We're adjourned.